Good evening. Today is June 9th, 2016. This is the meeting of the Hyde Park Central School District's Board of Education. The time is now 5:35. We may have a motion to go into executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to the employment or future employment of particular person or persons.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? I'll count you as here. I think we're finally ready to go. Can I have a motion to return to general session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Do you want to have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order is a public hearing on the code of conduct. So at this ... do we have a motion to go into this? May I have a motion to ...
So moved.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you. We are now in public hearing. Any comments that want ... anybody in the public who wants to comment on the code of conduct, please come up to the mic. Hopefully read them. There are minor changes.
Yeah. I can speak to the changes. There's really only one change over last year. We worked on the definition of weapon a bit to make sure that it aligned and we expanded a couple of sentences describing any kind of blade or knife as being subject to the code of conduct and consequences in school. Because before it, you could read it like a very small knife was acceptable and not a weapon. And we don't find that acceptable in school. So we made that revision.
We did define certain implements that are used in class under the control of a teacher. But other than that ...
Right. With approval from the principal and from class that, you know, there's certain classes where you might use a blade and that's acceptable, but it has to be with permission.
Right. So there ... any comment?
Just kind of curious on the gender expression and gender identity. Why do we have to have it so worded as that?
That actually comes right out of the Dignity for All Students Act and required language.
Actually, I think we have to look at that because that's in the great debate in the public right now. Is that what's in the Dignity Act? I mean, that's already really in the discussion there. And what does that mean to our district?
I'm not sure of your question. This is the law.
You're talking about transgender?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we're following the law, New York State education law.
What I'm getting at is, because there's a lot of discussion in the media about the bathrooms, the locker rooms, and this is saying that with this identification here that we're making here, that we have to make the locker rooms open to anyone who considers themselves into the opposite sex.
The locker rooms are not open for anyone to choose on any given day, but a student who has self-identified and that we agree is very seriously, you know, defining themselves as transgender can choose which restroom to use.
But is that open to changing in the locker room?
Yes.
When they change for gym?
Yes. And again, that's the law.
So if something happens where a area is exposed, how is then the district liable to that? I mean, if you're changing, you want to be transgender, you want to change, but you are not physically changed at anatomy.
Mm-hmm.
So what do we do as a district if that is exposed there?
We have opportunities for privacy for any student. So there's privacy opportunities within locker rooms and then also to use ...
Well, does that mean that we should have privacy for all students is what I'm getting at?
There's privacy available for any student who wants privacy or who's uncomfortable in the space with whoever's there. We cannot by law require a transgender student to use the nurse's bathroom or a different bathroom. So we are not by law ...
Is there a privacy in our locker rooms that are in multiple changes areas?
My understanding is that privacy is available to any student who wants privacy, whether they're uncomfortable with another student or they want privacy for themselves.
But as a district, if such area is exposed, what are we as a district liable to? Meaning that if such an area is exposed, that is in law, you've exposed yourself and you could be held even in considered a sexual lawsuit against it.
I think the law is in place to protect transgender students, which are really, you know, this is a really vulnerable population for bullying and harassment and very high suicide rates. So the law is in place to protect them. So for that, they're allowed to change.
So if our child, say if a male that says they're female and accidentally exposes, the law then protects that person and not the females that may be in the locker room?
I think the understanding in a locker room with changing is that people are going to expose themselves as they're changing and that that's, that if someone's uncomfortable with that, they can have privacy.
All right. We're not talking about kids taking showers and things like that. We're just talking about changing. Do they all take showers during gym?
I don't believe we shower anymore during this day.
I don't think they work well.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think it's controllable.
You know, anyone who's harassing anyone else or making anyone else uncomfortable and being aggressive is subject to the code of conduct. That's not acceptable, no matter who's doing that. But a transgender student has the legal right to change and use whatever restroom they're comfortable with.
But if a child gets exposed, then that child has a legal right to bring up lawsuit against the district?
I guess, you know, I'm listening to this and I'm thinking, well, it sounds like there's a legal question there.
Yeah.
That I'm not sure that we're capable of answering that question. So perhaps we should ...
That's my question.
I've seen panels of lawyers who are incapable of answering some of the questions at the current time. Some of the ways that other districts have handled some of the questions have been to have some side of a forum where you have somebody give you legal advice so that everybody can hear it. Typically, you also invite representatives from multiple agencies. So if there's interest, we could set up something where, you know, we have a chance for people to dialogue with people with experience in this area, with people with some expertise in the area, and then people have a chance to ask and answer questions. I know of a couple of school districts in our area who have had forums and conversations so that if there are parents or community members who have questions, it's a place for people to ask questions. There are differences of opinions in, even in and among lawyers. There are laws that seem crystal clear, but then there are new questions that challenge that. The best, we had, I sat through a very interesting panel recently, and there were someone from the New York State School Boards Association, there was somebody from the State Education Department, New York State Education Department, and some other people, and the head of the Connecticut School Boards Association for the whole state of Connecticut was there with his transgender son who teaches in a Connecticut public school. So it was a very diverse panel, and it represented people who are working in the field as transgender, a parent who sits on the School Boards Association for an entire state who's the father of the transgender student. And it was a rich panel, and it was a way for the community to come in and ask questions and hear the state's perspective, the legal perspective, and some perspective from some people who are working in the field.
And I should add that our lawyers did present for the staff. And this was when the law first came into being a year ago.
So we could, you know, maybe next fall if we'd like?
Yeah, I think we should look at that.
Yeah, I think it'd be a great idea.
Okay.
It's a need.
It's a need, yeah. There's a lot of misinformation, a lot of questions.
Yep. A lot of questions.
Looking at it, we've added certain terms to the code of conduct. This is at least the fourth list of terms associated with transgender that I've seen from different publications. I have one here that was provided to us in a recent magazine from the State School Board Association. They have different terms. There was a discussion I saw online about transgender terms. But to my recollection, these are terms that are being defined. They do not appear as quotes or use terms that are used in any of our other policies at this time, correct? We're defining transgender, gender, gender expression, gender identity. We're giving definitions to those terms. Now, but those terms are not referred to in any of our other policies yet. Is that correct?
It's, I believe that the, when we had the Dignity Act, the harassment policy separate, that it's now part of the code of conduct. So now that's where all of that lives. But we didn't change that from last year. The language there is the same as last year.
The same.
Can we do a search on our policies to see if these terms have appeared prior to this date in any of our other policies?
Sure.
Because, you know, if I'm getting new information now on what these terms mean, I feel inadequate having approved the changes to policies prior to this with those terms being used that I necessarily understood what the changes were.
Sure.
Any other comments? Anybody from the, would you like to speak, sir?
Garrett wanted to. I don't, oh, sorry. Are we in public participation?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're still in the public.
Oh, sorry.
Let the public speak first.
Okay. And then we'll get back to Garrett.
We're big on the public here.
Good evening. My name is Dale Blue. I'm a taxpayer in this district. No children currently in the school, grandchildren who could well be in the school at some point. So I'm sorry that I have not read the changes that you're discussing, but as I'm listening, there are a couple of questions I would like to ask and also, you know, give my perspective on the things that would concern me as a taxpayer and potential parent here. So first, you've clearly discussed locker room. Do the changes also apply to the bathrooms in general? That's a question, if you could answer that, that would be helpful for me to know.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Back and forth.
We can in a hearing, right? Or no?
Yeah, this is a hearing, so.
Yep. So yes.
Okay. So yes, it applies to all of the bathrooms.
Bathrooms and locker rooms, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So I think the overriding concern is respect for our constitutional and our civil liberties, but not from one side, but from both. And my concern is to make changes to one side while ignoring or reducing the liberties of the other. Now, that's a tall order to put before you. I understand there are physical limitations to buildings, there are laws you must deal with, but I do firmly believe that it would be, there would be a solution that would allow you to accomplish that. So in, as the, you know, the order of the day or the new business of the day is to learn how to respect some of these other gender terms, transgender or self-chosen gender, to do so in a way that reduces the rights and the liberties of those who are traditional gender, biological gender is also wrong. So whatever you come up with, I think from my point of view, the most important thing is you respect all equally. Now, if that means you've got to divide the bathrooms up or whatever, but to not, you know, not diminish, not diminish the rights of the students who would prefer a biological gender choice of bathrooms. So overall, that's my overall comment and viewpoint on it. John Q. Public.
Thank you. It's a difficult subject, is a difficult thing to get right, really. Everybody has rights. Everybody should be respected and their rights should be respected. How you do that in a public school becomes difficult because everybody has a different opinion as to what they want. Would you like to speak?
If I could, John.
Yeah. If you could, then it gets on TV.
Do they really need to say their names? They can't just say John Q. Public?
I'm the wife of John Q. Public, also known as Donna Blue, and my question is, is there a deadline by which you have to have a policy recommendation or in place? There is a beginning time, but is there an end time that your code of conduct needs to be solidified or updated? Or is this open-ended discussion? Or is it tomorrow night? Is it 60 days? What's the timeframe?
That's a good question. Traditionally, in the past, because we've just discussed this, in the past, we printed them at a certain date and they were handed out, and there was some confusion as to what, whether the handed-out one was in effect, because people have it home and look at it. And then it could have changed on the, on our digital site so that, you know, we're adding a statement that says the most current is the digital one. So that, you know, it is an ongoing process. It will be updated, or it may be updated, I'm sorry. So in that case, the current policy on the Hyde Park website is the one that's in effect.
That's in effect.
Yeah.
And does that policy make provision for transgender students now if they are, you know, at risk, uncomfortable? You have a policy in place for them pending resolution of these discussions we're having?
The current policy is, was adopted last year and that the law came into effect in the life first, 2015. So that's in effect. So that wasn't a change that we made this year. It's just brought up for the first time this year.
Okay. So an at-risk student has protection today?
Correct.
Okay. That's my question.
All right, Garrett, sorry. What do you got?
Well, I guess this is, I had a comment on this current topic, then I'll revert to what I was previously going to say.
Okay.
That in FDR, which I guess is where the problem mainly is with the transgender issue lies, is in the high school. Now, in the high school today, I'm not sure how many bathrooms we have, but there is many bathrooms that you are never too far away from two different bathrooms from any spot in the school. So I was wondering how practical would it be, which I assume it would not be too difficult to do, in as in changing the signs on the bathroom, to turn them into gender-neutral bathrooms, as I know, which is a current practice taking place in many colleges and schools across the country. So I was wondering, maybe one set of gender-neutral bathrooms on the top floor and one on the bottom floor seems to be a compromise that could perhaps address some of the issues that the gentleman previously mentioned of trying to respect both sides of the aisle and that all rights could hopefully be respected through that sort of a compromise.
Good thought. Yeah?
Well, I guess I played devil's advocate a bit.
Well, let me just say that I know there was at least one school district who they designated a single bathroom as transgender, and that didn't fly. That got up.
No. And that's exactly the point. It's that, you know, transgender, transgender, and I am not an expert, and Aviva's done a far better job than I would have explaining any of this, but I do have some involvement. We can't, you know, they choose. They make the selection of how they identify. And they, I hate to say they, but that person, that student has the ability to use the facility that is appropriate for the gender which they identify to, not a special facility.
Right. I knew that going into saying that, that ultimately is up to the student's decision to use whatever bathroom they so should identify with.
Correct.
However, it's, I think it'd be better than not having them at all. I can say that much, that I think that could make a lot of, even transgender students perhaps more comfortable in a transition in their gender, perhaps from going right from one year from the female bathroom to the next year the male bathroom, or even midway through the year, to now have a gender-neutral bathroom where they can feel more comfortable in.
Well, or probably ideally what might be best was if there were single occupancy bathrooms where a student of whatever choice could make, they could, they would be able to know that they are going into that bathroom and that they have their, the privacy that they might enjoy.
I'm not sure if that would be as practical of an option. It seems so that I, I think we have a few of them, and those are teachers' restrooms.
Yeah. I'd look hard at the facilities director to come up with a solution there.
My point being, I don't see how we could go wrong with not reserving a transgender
bathroom, which I can see very clearly how that would be an uproar in the community, how you had a transgender bathroom. However, a gender-neutral bathroom, on the other hand, I could see as being, as a fairly widely accepted practice.
I mean, I don't know where it's going to go. I've been reading probably every article that's been written on the subject that comes to me from the people I had been looking at before. And the thing that concerns me is there are, appears to be a two-prong effort. And the second prong is to redefine discrimination to a point where at some times the non-transgender student or person can be branded as discriminatory if they do or if they perform an action which could be considered as a reaction to a transgender student. I'm in a locker room and a transgender student comes in and I leave. There are, there have been prongs of looking to define that as discrimination by just standing up and publicly, you know, making a, doing something that identifies that you're uncomfortable with it. There are firms that have, basically, their solution is to go to lockout bathrooms. You know, I, to prevent uncomfortableness for people that don't want to participate or uncomfortable with a transgender walking into whether it's a male or female bathroom, they're provided with a bathroom. They go in, they lock out, and they're not, they're never going to have to worry about that situation. So the bathrooms, but, and I said, well, this makes sense. This is simple. And it wasn't a month later that suddenly there were questions being raised about that being discriminatory also. So I, you know, from a legal perspective, I don't see this, this whole issue settling down and resolving itself. Personally, and I'll make this, because it's, obviously, I need to make this statement now because it's where I'm going to be coming from on every discussion we have on this item, and it's simply this, that I feel the process that's been followed is unconstitutional. It's a subject that's being dictated by executive orders that really, the question is whether the executive order has the power to make these decisions and impose these regulations. And many times, states which are, you know, I read the Constitution, I learned the Constitution as a student, age 10 and 12 and 16, basically, in simple things, it says anything that is not directly identified as being the prerogative and in the control of the federal government is of the requirement of the state to set regulations individually. If you don't say the federal government's responsible for this or responsible for that, then any laws regarding any other subject is open game for the state to make regulations and laws about. And yet, I see that being whittled away very rapidly as federal courts get in and make decisions about state regulations. And, you know, there are a lot of things that are being imposed on people that have no laws behind them. Or have laws behind them that they're saying is wrong, but you can't say the federal government has the right to do that. So we're in a turmoil all the way around. And to stay away from that, I think we need to make sure we're looking at solutions that provides opportunities for both students, both types of students, to not be embarrassed and not to be singled out. I mean, I'm being told that many of the students would not be offended or would not be very uncomfortable with dressing rooms or locker rooms as long as there was a, an opportunity for, say, well, if somebody walks in that I have a problem with, I can retire to an area that, where I can be private. You know, I'm going to go there and change privately, and I'm going to stay in that changing room until I'm told that everybody else is ready for class. And then I come out, I'm not going to be embarrassed. I'll be honest with you, it's probably 20 years ago now, a little less, and I was at a concert in Philadelphia, a U2 concert. And I traveled from the city down ...
You were hip than I thought. Wow.
It's a cultural thing.
Oh, okay.
I got, I'd been traveling for three hours from New York down to Philadelphia for the concert, and first thing I did when I got into the venue was to look for a bathroom. And while I was in the bathroom, I suddenly hear a whole lot of, oh, what? What's going on here? And I look up and here's two women running into the men's bathroom, into the stalls, and on the way out, she says, you guys just won't believe the big, long lines in front of the ladies' rooms. It wasn't a transgender issue, it was a convenience issue, but I tell you, I was embarrassed as hell.
I can just add that New York State passed the law before the executive order.
Right. I think we have to be always cognizant of what the law is and whether or not we are following it. And I think having a forum and getting more information out is the first step in something that's, it's going to take a while to figure out.
We're going to have to weigh the people, the constituents of this district against the law, but I think we need to understand, you know, I need to have some presentations on where the law stands today, what is speculation, what is law, what is being challenged?
Even, even the same way, then we have to look at those that do want that privacy, and we have to honor that privacy, and do we label a bathroom that is non-transgender? Therefore, we're not offending the ones that say they can use any of the others, but this one is for those that don't.
Yeah. I'll tell you, Jeff, I've seen that discussion, at least in one article online, and they indicated that at some point, that's going to be a no-no. Because you say, you're telling them they can't enter into this one, that's discrimination.
But at the same time, we have to honor those students, too.
And I'm saying, but this seems ...
We have nine, say, we have 99 students and one.
But, you know, right now, the only one that seems to be gaining any traction is to provide a bathroom with a lockout saying, I can go into this one and not have to worry about it.
Yeah. Again, any student who requires or wants privacy can have it currently.
And at the same time, if we're going to go to all this gender-neutral, shouldn't we, as graduation, then have one color?
You can talk about it.
One color, alphabetical, and then we deal away with all of it?
Yeah. And Rick Party has already recommended that. Are we one color this year, Garrett, do you know?
I believe we are still two colors. It was my understanding of it, however, I may be wrong. I know Arlington is now one color. Everyone in Arlington is now maroon now. But as far as, I don't really see the colors as, it might be a nice gesture in the sense, but if students formerly female and now identifies as male, they want to wear yellow instead of green or what have you, and the vice versa, I really don't imagine that being a issue compared to the locker room and bathroom issue. If we want to stay two ... two colors, because it looks nice for photos, I can't imagine anyone really with any sort of credible argument having an issue with that. However, the issue, I think, really lies in the sense of the bathroom, and particularly the locker room, not necessarily the colors of the graduation gowns.
So if my daughter hated yellow, she would have rather have worn the green.
Yeah. I know it's under discussion, and I didn't know if they made a decision this year.
That's a comment that occurred way, I can attest to having occurred way back in the 80s, about the colors of the gowns and the girls not liking the color they were given to wear.
Just go to green then, just for the, everyone can have you look pretty in green.
All right. Are there any other comments from the audience?
Just have one more question.
Yes, please, so it gets on.
Yeah, just one more question that would be helpful to understand. And again, I am not familiar with all of the, all of the rules associated with all the levels. Does your code of conduct cover which grades?
Are you talking about this issue in particular?
Yes.
It's for everyone. It's a K-12 code of conduct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hughes?
Good evening. Steve Hughes, district resident. First, I want to commend the board on finally adding gender identity to their policy. As a parent of transgender child who graduated from FDR, he did not have a real pleasant time in high school. He wasn't outright bullied, but he just felt like he didn't fit in. And I think this will go somewhat towards alleviating that. In fact, I would urge the board to do more than just adjust the policy. Things like LGBTQ awareness and education for the staff, safe areas for any students who feel like they're being bullied or picked on, LGBTQ education for the entire student population. I would suggest that the board contact an organization like PFLAG to get more direct education on these issues. I was gonna save these comments until the regular public participation, but there have been some things discussed that made me not wanna wait. I think you really have to look at the bathroom and locker room issues differently. Transgender people are not asexual. They identify with specific sexuality. And you can't have a gender neutral bathroom because transgender boys are not gonna be comfortable using the same bathroom as transgender girls. And the issue of a separate bathroom for these people, it sounds suspiciously back when everybody can ride the bus, but the whites get to ride up front. So I would seriously consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody else?
May I comment?
Yes, absolutely.
I just, just to Steve, the, by understanding of the gender neutral bathrooms, at least at my daughter's college, is that they are open to everyone. It just simply says that it is gender neutral. So anyone can use it. It's not just allowable for the transgender students. And that was, that was my understanding of it. And I think that's what Garrett was trying to get at, too, that by having these options, every other bathroom, or something like that, that it was a possibility where everybody had an opportunity to feel comfortable. So I know what you're saying, but I don't think that's really what Garrett was leading to about segregation.
If that was implied at any point in my speaking, that it was meant just for the transgender students, then I apologize. That was not meant to be my meaning in the slightest. By the sense of gender neutral, it is meant for any gender, any identity. So therefore, if that's discriminatory, I don't know what isn't. If it's open to anyone, then, so, in that sense, someone who's transgender, by all means, if they still want identifying, they still wanna use the men's bathroom, and they were formerly a woman, then they can still do so. But I think by having the gender neutral bathroom, I don't see how we can go wrong, because it just gives one more option, because I don't know very much transgender students. I'm not the most educated person, because I'm sure transgender students may appreciate having that option exist. However, still, by law, that they still have the option to use the other, the traditional set of bathrooms.
Okay. Any other, any other coaches may have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Some of.
Oh, you wanna, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
That's nothing to do with that topic. I have a proposal through the board.
Do you want to step to the board? Oh, it has nothing to do with this? No, we have a public participation very soon. All right, I'm sorry.
So Doug.
Gotta talk to my good ear, here, over here.
I did want to talk about the proposed change. Although the topic has been dominated by time spent on transgender, I did wanna talk about the definition of weapon. The text we have in front of us spends three or four dozen words for some sort of edged implement. It strikes me as redundant. So I'm kind of curious about why it is that we feel that we have to list every possible edged implement that could possibly hurt someone, and then go on to talk about, you know, or other device, instrument, material, substance that can cause physical injury or death. It just seems like a pretty legalistic.
You wanna handle that one?
It's really lifted more out of criminal code, and most districts have it. And it has to do with, if something like that happens, it connects to criminal charges in that way. So that's why it is unwieldy in that way. And then we go on to say that although maybe not classified as a weapon, we also prohibit X, Y, and Z in our school. And that's where the confusion comes in, because it's, small blades are not considered weapons out in the world.
Right.
You're allowed to carry.
Anything under four inches is not a weapon.
Right. So we just wanted to clarify that. But it really is legal language around, this is a weapon. And it even cites the code in there at the beginning. So I know it is, it's awkward, but it, I think generally districts look at that as a way to protect themselves when they implement the code of conduct when there's a weapon, and also easier for the police.
But what happens when something new is introduced? I mean, stun guns.
It gets added every year.
You get a gap between when that is.
It changes every year. But the catch-all, anything used as a weapon, is there for that.
Used as a weapon.
That's in there, too. So anything that you use as a weapon, you're in trouble for what you did to either threaten or hurt someone, plus that it was a weapon. So it kind of covered both ways. But it does feel like a lot of extra language.
The other question I had, I've long been uncomfortable with the idea that carrying a penknife is considered a dangerous thing to do, in public, in a school. And I think that we've, as a society, we've gotten a little carried away with what is dangerous and what is not. And so, part of my question is, you know, aren't we overreacting here? And the other part is, how many people get injured in the event where we allow people to carry around a penknife so they can open their mail?
Right. Well, the principle's really felt, I mean, that's why the second piece that talks about blades is very open. Because if a kid accidentally in their backpack has a, you know, a Swiss Army knife from a family trip, the school can choose, as they do in these cases, to just say, I'll hold this for mom to come pick it up. And then there's no consequence. There's no discipline. So they wanted, part of this separation was to be clear that these things are weapons, but all of these things are subject to discipline. But that is up to the discretion of the situation. So someone who accidentally, and that happens, you know, it does happen, where they accidentally bring something to school, and it's clear that there's no intent to harm anybody. And then there's no discipline. But we wanna, there are also people who do bring, you can do a lot of damage with a small blade, too. So we wanna make sure that we're, that we have that latitude.
Okay. Okay. Ready to move on then? All right. Okay. Can I have the motion to go back to the general? I have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Some of.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? opposed? Thank you. There are no agenda modifications for the ninth meeting. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as listed?
Some of. Second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? opposed? Thank you. That brings us to Pride. And I'm gonna just get in first, I'm gonna ask you to do something for me.
By all means.
James is here tonight. Could you introduce him and as our new, our new board member?
Oh, you jumped the gun on me. That was gonna be my keynote mention.
Oh, okay, good.
Maybe we can do that now.
Yes.
Well, I'd like to introduce to everyone here, as well as those out in the district that are watching this, my successor as the student representative on the Board of Education is right there, James Pineda. You stand up. Is there anything that you wanna say, James, or? He's good. Fantastic. I think the students will be in good hands with James. Fantastic. We good on that now?
Yep, we're good.
All right.
Thanks.
So, on the sports side of things, Jeffrey Peters, who won the Section 9 title last week remaining, it's two weeks ago now, went on to the state championship and placed 17th in the state, which is definitely a huge accomplishment by any standard. So congratulations to him. Our boys eight boat, for our crew team, won their league title on Saturday. Also, on the sports side of things, we had a nice senior night athletics dinner, which was two nights ago, I believe. So, maybe three now?
Three.
Three. So, we had that banquet at the Grand View, which I think was just an all-around fantastic night. Student government, now, if I can pull this up quick, we had elections over, I think it was a couple of weeks ago. And in that, we came out with a whole list of new student government officers. And I think it's important to note that the, I guess the wheels of democracy are really turning. We don't officially keep records of the number of candidates that run each year. However, by all accounts, it was the highest number of students running that anyone can remember. So I think that's a huge accomplishment, saying that student government has been trying to work towards is to get more interest in the students running. And so, for our incoming senior class, the class of 2017, the president is Neil Tompkins, the vice president is Abby Lambert, the secretary is Katie DeWitt, the treasurer is Nick Bell, and the PTSA representative is Megan Marshall. The class of 2018, the incoming juniors, the president is Nate Craig, vice president Mike Baird, secretary Carolyn Ryan, treasurer Kimberly Ocampo, and the PTSA representative is Natalie Wajda. The incoming sophomores, the class of 2019, the president is Carly Johnson, vice president Paul Sanford, secretary Owen Williams, the treasurer is Patrick Izzo, and the PTSA representative is Jaren Reyes. I don't know if that was pronounced correctly. Sorry if that was. And then, the incoming freshmen, the class of 2020, Paige Kerr, Gabriella Boyd, Leah McMahon, then secretary Arisa Anderson, and the PTSA representative is Patrice Cranston. So congratulations to all of them on their newly elected positions. Now, also, SGO started a brand-new program. It's called the Positive Partnership Program. It's a brand-new this year, and the idea of it is to have seniors who've shown outstanding character, they don't even have to be necessarily the best student, but they just have to be able to be a good role model for incoming freshmen who have been identified as at-risk. So in this program, the hope is that the seniors hopefully will take them under their wing, and try and guide them through that freshman year, which might be their biggest struggling year, to try and give them the sort of advice that they wish they may have had as freshmen, in the attempt to hopefully boost the long-term graduation rate. Now, for varsity club, we had a highway cleanup today, so if you drive down 9G, please peek out and look at all the, or there the lack of bottles, cans, and pieces of car. And prom, both the juniors and seniors had their prom, that I believe everyone had a fantastic time in, were both instant free, in association to senior prom. We had a mock DWI. I think it was very informative. Then I'd just like to thank all the first responders, police, EMS, who went in to put on this performance for the seniors. And I think Mr. Zagorski happened to be one of those participating. So on behalf of the students, I'd like to thank you and the rest of the fire company, police, and other first responders. So I think that rounds out what I had. If there's anything else I'm sure wanna add, maybe from perhaps the middle school and elementary school side of things, or anything?
Okay. One thing I wanted to mention was Concert in the Parks. The first concert in the parks was held at Vanderbilt Mansion. I was there behind the scenes, and it was an excellent concert. And for the first time in many, many years, it did not rain. So that was excellent.
I bet there were clouds, though.
Yeah. Not much. It was a beautiful night. We had two very special events today. One I had the opportunity to go to, and another that I got stuck in the car crash, that thankfully, as of right now, there were no injuries. But I will turn both of them over to Cora. One she led, and one I know she got to attend, and that's where I got stuck in the crash, so.
Great. Thank you. The first was at the high school this afternoon. As some of you know, we started a program called Project Lead the Way this year. We had our first cohort of students in a class called Introduction to Engineering. And today was the celebration of their first year in the program. We had about 45 students. We had parents join us, faculty, members of our partnership team, which includes professors from Marist, also parents, and our newest board member. And it was an opportunity for everyone to hear about the program, to see and hear about samples of the student projects, and just to celebrate the fact that we've had a full year of the program now. Next year, we're starting a different strand. So we have students who are continuing in engineering, but also starting the strand that focuses on computer sciences. So that was quite wonderful. And again, so happy to see so many of the students choose to stay after school and participate in that. And then, we had an extended day program this year at the elementary level that just is winding down now. Next Thursday is the last day of session. But today, at the Violet Avenue Elementary School, was a wonderful production. We were able to get the rights to a play based on the very, very popular Magic Treehouse series that our elementary kids absolutely adore. And some of those books have been turned into full-blown musical productions. And I wanna thank Gillian McGann, I'm glad she's in the audience tonight, because she was a tremendous help to me in getting all of that organized. And today's performance at Violet Avenue was just a great testament to how much work was done. In addition to the play itself, if you looked around the gym at Violet Avenue, you saw just incredible artwork that supported it. So you saw huge diagrams and pictures of dinosaurs, and life-size paintings of paw prints, and just wonderful collaboration between the art department and everyone else. That same production is going to be offered at Netherwood and Ralph R. Smith next week. And as I mentioned, extended day ends on Thursday of next week, but it's been wonderful. So thank you.
Cora, just a question. I found myself being stretched to where I wish I was Padre Pio, or I could be in 10 places at once. I found out that having six grandchildren in the area can fill up your day every day. And a lot of these events that I'd love to be at, I'm not able to get to. Do we ever tape any of these things, and can we?
Sadly, because the play that was on today is one that we had rights to. Sadly, because the play that was on today is one that we had rights to, there was no photography or video allowed. Yeah, it, it would have been quite a thing to have in our library. It was just fabulous.
All right, thank you.
Some of the other ones, I know when they have the, some of the other musicals at Ralph R. Smith, the full-blown ones, we do tape. Maybe we can do a better job of making them available or showing people where to find them. But these ones, we couldn't. We have to start filming the concerts. We need to get someone to do that. Roger suggested that one, too. Right?
We got anything else?
Being my last opportunity to embarrass Garrett again, again.
Oh, boy.
He mentioned the varsity club's recognition deal for all seniors, where all seniors, all seniors that participate in athletic program this year were recognized for their participation and given mementos for the school, for the different events. And at the end, there were several, I, I use this word with great import, prestigious awards made and some scholarships awards. And I would like to cite the fact that Garrett was recognized as the outstanding male athlete at FDR. Congratulations, Garrett.
Okay, is that it? Yeah. Okay. We now have a summer food service program. Oh, you had student time? Oh, I'm sorry.
We're, we're good to go on the summer food service program.
Yeah, I didn't think you had any.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
So, while Lauren's getting set up, I just want to thank her for giving this presentation. Last year, she had been on the job for a couple of weeks when we learned about this possibility. This is a growing trend across the state. This is an opportunity that we qualify for. And we had a nanosecond where we thought, oh, she's on the job three weeks, let's see if we can do it, and realized that this was a big endeavor, and it takes a lot of planning. And Lauren spent the, had the luxury of the entire year to get ready for it. So, this will be our first year, and thank you very much, Lauren.
Thank you. We are very excited about this program. I'm happy to be here to tell you about it. It's, the Summer Food Service Program is its title. It's run through the Child Nutrition Program, which supports all of our programs throughout the school year. This program is unique, and as we run it as an open site, it, it's available to any community member who is 18 and under, as well as any summer programs, educational programs. Those students will also be eligible to be part of this program. Every meal is provided to the child or student who's 18 years or under for free of charge. On our nutritional standards that we uphold throughout the school year will also carry through the summer. We're hoping, that's a choice on our, on our part, because the leniency on the summer food service program does allow you to skimp on some of those fruits and vegetables, but we will be upholding those to, hopefully, our youth will, it will encourage them to make better choices when school is not in session. This is a brief breakdown of how the program will get reimbursed through the USDA and the state. As you can see during the school year, under our school breakfast program and our national school lunch program, our students qualify for lunch price benefits based on either their household income or other assistance that they may receive. The summer food service program is unique, because every student qualifies for a free meal, and the reimbursement rates are much higher to accommodate that throughout the program. We have some beautiful signs and some flyers that will be distributed, as well as a letter that I'm finalizing to get out to all of our households in the district to tell them about this wonderful program that they'll be able to take advantage of. And any profits that we generate from this summer program will be able to carry through the next school year to support our other programs that we run through the school year, the National School Lunch Program and School Breakfast Program. We have, Violet Avenue is our qualifying location. Violet Avenue qualifies based on the current enrollment of the students and what those students have qualified in their lunch price benefits. We're thankful to our administrators, who have so generously agreed to hold our educational programs this summer at Violet Avenue, because that support of feeding our students will make this program a huge success. We have some staffing that we've posted for, and I'm happy to say that we already have some interest in current food service employees who are excited to be a part of this new program. And I'm excited to help it grow with them. I've posted the service times here. As you can see, we're making great efforts to keep our summer program students comfortable as staggering the times, so the public and the students won't interact. Our program will be open every day that the summer programs are in session. So, that's Monday through Friday, July 1st through August 12th. And of course, we will be closed to celebrate Independence Day on Monday, the 4th. Along with the previously mentioned letter that I'll be sending home to parents, I'm going to include a frequently asked questions sheet. But as for now, the food service office and the district website are a great resource for any questions. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any that you may have for me for the food service program this summer.
Not a question, but just to reinforce that we have our summer bridge program and our extended school year program in the same building. And when Lauren talked about the staffing, we are hiring a security person, because, you know, we have very young children there and could have 18-year-olds, or we're not allowed to turn anyone away. And so, we will be hiring a security person to make sure that nobody wanders through the building during our summer program. And we'll be monitoring that closely, and if we find that we need an extra support staff person, we'll do whatever we can to make sure that, you know, we, the, the program runs smoothly and safely. So, we're going to start with one security person, and we'll take it from there.
Absolutely. And there's always, there's gonna be an administrator present, too.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you. Great to see you all.
Great job, Lauren. Thank you. This was Lauren's first presentation to the board, so, good job.
Well done.
Okay, at this time, I have a motion to enter public participation, please.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Now, sir. Wait, what are they, pictures of?
Shall I begin?
Yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is David Richard, and I am a 1974 graduate of Franklin, Illinois Roosevelt High School. I have recently started a new business called Divinity Memorial and Headstone Cleaning. Tonight, I have before and after pictures of some of my work that I've done on a headstone and numerous footstones. I am here tonight to propose the cleaning of the six-foot-by-three-foot marble and brick-pillared FDR High School sign, which is located at the northeast corner of the FDR High School property. I have taken pictures of the sign and would appreciate it if you would take a look at my previous work and determine whether or not the FDR sign could use a cleaning. Cleaning the stone would be completed by hand with intricate and meticulous care. I use a biodegradable stone cleaning solution, soft bristled brushes, toothbrushes, toothpicks, and wood scrapers. That caused no harm to the stone. I am also insured. I have a written proposal, which would cover two to three days' labor and all material. And also, depending on what day graduation is, I believe chances are it would be completed before graduation.
Graduation is the 24th.
It would be completed by then.
23rd. It's Friday night.
It's Friday the 24th.
Friday night, yes. I'm assuming there's a charge for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't know how we handle stuff that's not in the budget.
Well, we can.
Go through Director of Facilities.
Facilities, yeah.
Right.
Have you gone through?
No, I have not. What I did was I handed a proposal. I was told that it would be delivered to, to you guys, and obviously, it wasn't. I handed it to one of the secretaries in the district, and she said she would forward it to everyone here. And I'm learning that she hasn't done that. That's why I came here tonight.
Okay, so.
Okay, so, do we have, do, do we have the proposal, Debbie? Do we know? We don't know. Okay. Did you see the proposal, Elliot? Okay, so, do you have an extra one?
Yes, ma'am.
If you could just give it to us, that would be great. And is your contact information on it?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
As long as he's got money in the budget, I know it's not too much.
Take a look at it.
You do good work.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. And we'll get back to you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Would anybody else like to address the board? It's to use.
Back again, I guess I don't speak extraordinarily very well. I forgot to mention one thing. I did search your policies. Gender identity, gender identity is mentioned in four policies and one regulation, 100, 115, and its regulation, 53 dot 10, 5300 dot 10, and 5300 dot 30. And I just have a fundamental question. If your policies prohibit discrimination based on gender identity, how can you prevent a transgender person from using whichever bathroom he or she chooses without discriminating against them? Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else? May I have a motion to close public participation, please? Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Anybody want to respond to? Thanks for, what, you got your phone? One of the, yes, one of the nice things of the service that we have is a search facility. Yeah, so it's.
Man, I would just say that, I mean, he's right. We can't discriminate. So, I, I think that's part of what we're, we're trying to sift through here, is how we provide all of the services that are appropriate.
And stay within the law.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's new territory, I think, that everyone is, is kind of working their way through. And I think so long as everybody continues working with an honest effort, we'll get there. It's gonna take, it's gonna take information from both sides. I think we, I think we should definitely have some kind of a forum. And if, if there's a need to, to reach out to a broader resource, I think we should do that.
Oh, absolutely. I've seen some very well-balanced panels.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to board discussions. First consideration of draft calendar, 2016-17. Anybody have any comments on that? That was provided?
How about them snow days? No.
No? All right. Let's, let's move on to the draft calendar, 2016-17. Yeah, yeah. The B, the board meeting calendar? Anybody have any discussion on those? Fairly similar to last year.
I, I'd look at February, Sat, 2017. The dates identified on the matrix do not match the date cited underneath.
GAP. I mean, on Saturdays.
Yeah, Saturdays.
Be more convenient.
Yeah, we'll change. Thanks, Dan. Any other comments? We're good to move on? Yeah. Okay. Tricky. Moving on to the drafts of the 2016-17 calendar. It's listed there. Which shows the school days, the recesses. Any, any problems with that? Also, it deals with the unused school, snow days or emergency days.
One of the comments that I had on the, I presume that we're in discussion?
Yep, yeah, we are.
One of the comments that I had concerns the week of Thanksgiving in November. The 21st and 22nd are the Monday and Tuesday of that week, and they are scheduled to be parent-teacher conferences. I suppose the question that occurred to me first is how many parents are we gonna be missing, because they may be out of town for, traveling for Thanksgiving?
We have traditionally had that on the calendar for as long back as we can remember, and it, it has never surfaced as an issue.
Okay.
They basically have to take their kids out of school two to, or half a day to miss it.
Any other question or comments? Okay, we move on.
By the way, I like this format better.
Yeah, it is easier to read.
It's easier to read. It's much more straightforward.
Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. May I have a motion for 11.1 action on the consent agenda, please?
Some of.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, yeah. I'll do one, you do one? How's that? Well, or do you want to do one and I'll do one? Or do you want to do one and she does one? No, we're doing personnel.
One from column A, two from column D.
Right. So, let's talk about the personnel agenda, and, and I will. I would ask Cora if you could talk about the appointment of our new Director of Fine and Performing Arts. How's that?
It would be my pleasure. As people are aware, Barbara Marine is retiring this year after many years in the district as Director of Fine and Performing Arts, high school principal, Director of Fine and Performing Arts, and music teacher. And joining us in her place is Melinda DiMio, who will be joining us in July. She comes to us with a tremendous background in the arts, as a teacher, as an administrator. She's coming to us from the other side of the river, and we can't wait for her to come. So, welcome.
Welcome.
And Aviva?
I just wanted to point out that Luca Fesco is here, and he's being appointed as our, our new ENL teacher.
Yay.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. That brings us down.
A big sigh.
May I have a motion for special education placements, please?
Some of.
Any discussion? Dan?
I reviewed the packet and recommend its adoption as presented to us.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Let me just get over here.
Do you want this back? Oh, thank you, thanks. I didn't bring my computer.
All right, can I have a motion for the first reading of policies 5300 point 10? The next, the only upcoming meeting is Thursday, June 23rd, 7 o'clock. Here is the next Board of Education meeting.
That's why the 23rd rang the bell.
That would be the day before graduation.
That's right. That's why that was ringing a bell. I'm like, I know I have something on the 23rd.
All right. Unfortunately, we need to enter executive session, executive session to discuss contract and evaluations. I have a motion. Now, I know you're reluctant, but we got to do this. Come on.
Some move.
Thank you. Any discussion? You want to have a discussion on this? No? All in favor? Thank you.
Delaying my suggestion.
We have to do this. I'm sorry. Okay. First, can I have a motion to appoint me as the clerk pro tem?
Some move.
We can't take action until we come back from executive session.
Well, not according to this, but.
Right? We can't take action in executive session.
Okay.
We got to close.
You came out of executive session while you were the clerk pro tem.
Yeah. I don't know.
I, I propose that we simultaneously.
Whatever works. Whatever works. All right.
What he said. Some move.
Okay. All right. No, any discussion?